Instructions for accessing subtitles in a language other than English are included on our board meetings webpage, as well as in the description below. Instrucciones para acceder a los subtítulos en un idioma que no sea el inglés se incluyen en nuestra página web de reuniones de la junta, así como en la descripción a continuación.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the Ross Valley School District Board of Trustees regular meeting. Today is May 29th, 2024, and it is 5:31. I'm calling our meeting to order. We have four trustees present in person at the Ross Valley School District office at 100 Shaw Drive in San Anselmo. Myself, Rachel Litwack, Chris Landals Cobb, Daniel Cassidy, and Ryan O'Neal. Trustee Shelley Hamilton is not able to attend today. We also have Superintendent Marcy Trehan, CBO Chris Carson, and Teresa Machado. And our meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube, and the link is on our website and on the agenda. There will be a 60-second delay between the meeting and the YouTube livestream. An audio recording will be made available to the public on our district website within 72 hours following the meeting. And with that, I'm going to move on to our items here. We've got Item B, Closed Session, Identify Closed Session Topics. Today, we will be discussing Public Employee Profeminence Evaluation Title Superintendent Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. Item five is Conference with Labor Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code 54957.6. All employee groups, CSEA, RVTA, Confidential Classified, Classified Management, and Certified Management. And item number six, Public Employee Discipline, Dismissal, Release, and/or Reassignment Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. So I have identified our closed session topics, and we have no public here for public comments. So at 5:32, I will recess us to closed session. All right. Good evening and welcome, everybody. It is 6:38, and we are reconvening out of closed session. We have only one item to report. The board took action to non-reelect one temporary certified employee for the 2024-25 school year, and gave direction to the superintendent to provide the employee with any and all required notices. The vote was unanimous with all four members present voting, and Shelley Hamilton was absent, so she did not vote today. And moving on with our agenda. Oh, sorry. I need to do a roll call on that. Like, actually have everybody say it back? Okay, so Daniel. Oh.
The vote was with unanimous of the all members present voting.
I did this one.
Members Daniel. So just read this part.
Okay. So members Daniel Cassidy, Chris Landals Cobb, Ryan O'Neal, and Rachel Litwack were in favor, and member Shelley Hamilton was absent. Okay. Weird formalities aside. Our next item is procedural, and we will stand up to do the Pledge of Allegiance, so you may stand and join me if you'd like. All right. Our next item is to adopt the agenda and time allocations. Does anybody have any changes, requests? I will entertain a motion.
So.
All right. I have a first. Do I have a second? All right. Daniel? Sorry. Ryan, excuse me. Daniel?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rachel? Aye. All right. We have an adopted agenda and time allocations. Moving on, we have the recognition of retirees ceremony and reception. And kicking it off, do... Who do we want to start with? Okay, there we go. Thank you, Julia.
When I reflect on the totality that all four of these educators have given, the countless encouragements they have offered to students and colleagues, and the depth of consideration that ensured every student in Ross Valley is recognized and valued. The sum is far more than its parts. It is indeed undefinable. Each of these individuals has made significant contributions to our school district, and tonight, we take a moment to express our gratitude for their dedication and service. Please join me in recognizing and celebrating the careers of our 2024 retirees. And so we will begin with Katie Frank. And John is going to be acknowledging Katie this evening.
I want to first say that Katie Frank is a beloved Whitehill teacher. Little fun fact, Ms. Frank replaced her sister-in-law, who was a teacher at Whitehill in 2006. It's this little fun fact that actually relates to a larger theme about Katie's teaching career at Whitehill, how family-oriented she is. I say that not just because her own children came through Whitehill, but because of the warmth and care she shows to all of her students and colleagues throughout these years. She is family-oriented, yes, because of the love and commitment she has to her children and her own family, but she creates a sense of family in all of her classes she taught. Everyone who has ever been in her class knows what a warm, welcoming place she creates and the high level of expectation she has for her students that she couples with incredible support. Her classroom has always been a safe space where students both value and encourage to express themselves. Ms. Frank's warmth and empathy have helped countless students find their voice and believe in their own capabilities. She has also mentored many teachers throughout her career at Whitehill, and there are marks of her mentorship all over campus and in so many of her classrooms. I also have to speak to her passion about life. She loves to travel, which I hope she is able to do even more now that she's retiring. Ms. Frank's love for literature and writing is unparalleled. Ask any of her students or colleagues. It's infectious. It's inspiring. She has a unique ability to connect with each student, understanding their individual strengths and nurturing their potential. Whether through a powerful novel, a thought-provoking poem, or an engaging classroom discussion, Ms. Frank has consistently ignited a passion for learning. Ms. Frank, as you embark on this new chapter of life, we want you to know how deeply grateful we are for your years of dedication and passion. You have such a huge mark on our school, on this district, and your spirit will continue to inspire itself.
We have a tradition in Ross Valley of awarding our retirees with their very own words and many of your colleagues' intriguing words that they've had when they interview, such as passionate, kind, creative, smiling, baker, adventurous, positive, funny, and.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. And next, we have Shay Johnson, who has provided 23 years of service in Ross Valley.
It's crazy to think that just earlier this month, I was standing right here bragging about how amazing Shay is and what a contribution she has had at Brookside. She was our Golden Bell recipient for Brookside this year. And then she told me she was retiring. We are all so happy for you, Shay, and excited for you, and also really sad. Shay feels a really, really big part of our Brookside community. I've only had the pleasure and the honor of working with Shay for this school year. I met Shay in August, and I knew pretty immediately that she was going to be a go-to person, someone that I could check in with, someone that I'd ask questions to. And Shay is always a go-to problem solver. We've come across some challenges this year, and Shay approaches every challenge with an open mind, with absolute student-focused, solution-oriented problem-solving. And it's been such a pleasure to work with you and to learn from you this year. Since I've only known Shay for this school year, I did ask some of your colleagues, who have known you for many, many years, what it is about you that they love. So here are some things. She is a consistent team player who does what is best for kids each and every day. She collaborates with general education teachers and is flexible when unexpected situations arise. My students love working with her because of her warmth and her patience. They're constantly asking me, "When is it my turn to go visit Ms. Shay and work with Ms. Shay?" She's always prepared for my students and has their goals and best interests at heart and in mind, and she is fully representative of the Brookside spirit. And I can say without a doubt, all of those things are true about our Ms. Shay. We love you. We are going to miss you so much. I don't know what we're going to do without you, but we are so supportive and so excited for your next adventure. And thank you for everything you've done for Brookside and our bears.
And some of the words on Shay's wordle are committed, consistent, welcoming, caring, collaborative, patient. All right. And next, we have with 24 years in Ross Valley, Doreta Rusier.
It's with a mixture of joy and nostalgia that we're here to celebrate you today, Doreta, who's been, as Julia shared, an art teacher here in the Ross Valley School District for over 24 years. Those of you who are teachers in the audience, and honestly, probably if you know someone who's a teacher in the audience, know that particular challenge of planning and teaching a new course. And I remember my time when I was a teacher at Whitehill years ago, when Doreta took on this new digital art course. And despite describing herself as not a tech person, and spent a lot of time, if you can imagine, learning new programs, figuring out how she was going to help support students learning something that she herself was learning. And it's that willingness to model and learn alongside her students that is central to how she has maintained that passion for teaching for over 24 years. Enthusiasm is a really critical part of being an effective teacher, and Ms. Rusier's passion for teaching students art is clear. In Ms. Rusier's class, you'll go in, you know that the students are going to be learning. She teaches with that kind of optimism and kindness alongside her high expectations that ensure that all students in her class are finding success. And as one of your students puts it, "Ms. Rusier's a great explainer, and she always makes sure you're getting your projects done on time." As a teacher and colleague, Doreta shows up with a generosity of spirit. She is lovingly been referred to as the mother of the art department for the way in which she cares for both the art program as a whole and also her team. That generosity extends beyond the classroom, to the blankets that she's knit for staff members' babies, for the kind words and cards that she's organized when a staff member has a life event. Doreta, your impact has been great. The work you have done here in our district will be felt for generations to come. Thank you for your enthusiasm, your commitment to lifelong learning, and your boundless generosity. Our entire community has been made better by your presence.
And some of Doreta's words sincere, sensitive, dedicated, inspiring, passionate, thoughtful. And that brings us to the 32-years in our district Superintendent Marcy Trehan.
So I'm sorry that you have me getting to speak for you. I feel like these wonderful principals have been so eloquent, and I know I'm so grateful that you've all worked with these wonderful educators. I feel the same about Marcy. So I'm sorry if it's a little inadequate. I wasn't surprised when you announced your retirement. I was a little sad. It's kind of bittersweet, but I'm really excited for you and the time that you're going to spend with your family and the next things that you're going to do. I know, I'm fairly certain you're not going to be idle. I can't imagine in any universe where that would happen. I have known other superintendents, but you're the only one that I've worked with. And you've helped me so much as a new trustee and being board president and all along the way. And I just want to express my really deep gratitude for your guidance through this whole term. You've taken time to help me as I navigated the steep learning curve of being a board member with kindness, humor, and patience, providing context for situations that has been useful from a governing perspective and just understanding our community. You've been equally generous with your time and willingness to help anyone who asks for assistance or connecting them with the person who can help them. As board president, I've had a lot of exposure to the volume of work that you do. I am so appreciative of the way that you always have time to talk to people. And I know you have an avalanche of work waiting for you, and you still will stop and listen and provide feedback, guidance. Sometimes you just listen. What I've also always appreciated is your deep dedication to our students and our district. Students have always been at the center of your work. It's been very clear, especially serving on this board, that that is where your focus has been. And looking over your tenure, some of the things that stand out as a superintendent specifically, because I wasn't around for the other parts, but your major focus on the diversity and equity and inclusion that we've had the last few years has been really meaningful. And the management of a pandemic, your first year. I mean, that's a big thing in your first year of superintendency. And no one could have predicted it, but you just kept moving along, and we kept going through it and just kept safety in mind and kept plowing through it. We've also had initiatives like the multi-tiered system of support, comprehensive emergency preparedness plans. I'm so thankful we have AEDs in all our schools now. That was a personal thing of mine. There's been so many positive changes for our students, but the consistent theme has always been what is best for our students and what can we do to provide it for them? And you've always thought that first. You have a very unique ability to not sleep. I don't know how you get so much time in the middle of the night. To call you hardworking is a massive understatement. Some people might have eased up when they knew a retirement was coming, and I've seen you basically floor it and just do everything you can to make sure we're in a really good place going forward. And I'm so grateful to you. And I think that we're going to be in a very good place moving forward due to a lot of your hard work. I am so grateful for the time that we have served together. And I, it's been a true honor to work with you, to learn from you, and to watch as you've handled this role with care and compassion. On behalf of the board and those who've worked with you, thank you.
There's lots of words on here. Energetic, meticulous, esteemed, compassionate, attentive, student-focused, caring, honest, fun. There are so many words that belong on here. And just, I personally want to thank you for being my most extraordinary mentor. I've learned so much from you and had a great time doing so. With that, we have time for reception. I have a reception.
Yes.
Yes. All right. And moving on with our agenda, we have communication, public comment regarding items not on the open session agenda. Do we have any public comments? It does not appear so. And then the next item is correspondence and communication to the board. And we have, it's like, six attachments there. I think all of us have read those. And the next item is presentation and/or action items. The first one is the appointment of RVSD Superintendent of Schools and approval of the employment agreement. And on January 31st, we selected leadership associates after looking for a proposal. And after an extensive recruitment and selection process, we were thrilled to announce Mr. Tyler Graff as the top candidate and our finalist for the position of superintendent. And tonight, with approval of the, hopefully of the contract in front of us, he will begin employment as Superintendent of the Ross Valley School District effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. So. Questions, comments on this contract here? Nothing else from my fellow trustees? Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? No? None appearing so? All right. I will entertain a motion then. There's no further discussion.
I recommend Board of Trustees appoint Tyler Graff Superintendent for the Ross Valley School District effective July 1st, 2024, and for the period July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027.
And a motion goes second.
I am the second, Beth.
Great. A motion is second. Daniel?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Congratulations. If you would like to say something, you're welcome. Well, thank you. We're looking forward to beginning your tenure. And our next item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement.
And Julia will cut it. Our Assistant Superintendent will take this one. Thank you, Julia.
All right. Yes. I'm very super pleased to be bringing this to our Board of Trustees this evening. It's something we've wanted to do for quite some time. And it's really important to make note of the process. I want to thank one of our parents, Tori Canby, who really helped guide us through the whole process of developing the land acknowledgement. And she also was the one that brought our land acknowledgement to the Miwok Tribal Council for approval. So that was a real honor to be able to work with her and have that guidance. And additionally, we had another one of our parents, Ramona Little Taylor, who's also a member of our Parent Guardian Equity Task Force, work with us along with one of our teachers, Christina Workman, a third-grade teacher at Hidden Valley, and two of our principals, John Baker and Kristy Fish. And so it was, it was really a great process putting this together. And just a couple of things before I share our land acknowledgement. But recognizing that a land acknowledgement is a formal statement that recognizes and respects Indigenous peoples as traditional stewards of the land and that it is an act of gratitude and an act of conciliation. And our Ross Valley School District land acknowledgement reads, "The Ross Valley School District acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Miwok people of present-day Marin, represented by the Coast Miwok Tribal Council and Federated Indians of Greatland Rancheria. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, present people, and future generations. We recognize the Coast Miwok people are the original stewards of the place we now call Marin County and have been here since time immemorial. Our land acknowledgement is not a performative act. It is a commitment to future work to dismantle the harmful legacies of colonialism." And, and this part is actually the part that we spent the most time with of really thinking about our role in Ross Valley in terms of acknowledgement and gratitude. So, "Our district is committed to ensuring safety and inclusion for our Indigenous students and their families, developing students' commitment to environmental stewardship, developing an awareness of Indigenous peoples' past, present, and future, breaking cycles of misinformation and harmful narratives, acknowledging contemporary Native culture, and providing space for hope and healing." And so this land acknowledgement is our formal district land acknowledgement, and it will find its place on our district website. But we are also excited that it will serve kind of as a launching point for our sites to develop their own tailored land acknowledgements. We also have plans for our third-grade teachers to... Christina Workman again, and one of our other teachers, Trisha Pelleridi, another third-grade teacher, are working on a lesson plan because third grade spends a lot of time studying the Coast Miwok to support them in developing their own land acknowledgements. And that was something that Tori talked about a lot, was that it doesn't need to be this static thing where you can't, you know, make any changes, but it should be whatever really feels meaningful in the moment. So with that, just no, no action needs to be taken by the Board of Trustees? Just sharing where we are with it and open to any questions or thoughts?
Julia, I have a question, and thank you for that, actually. I, I, I hear the wonderful parents who participated and school leaders. And I know that Tori's ancestral background. Was there any work or assistance from the actual Miwok leadership locally about what this means to them and, you know, having something like this?
No. Tori was really the, the person that was kind of mediating that part of it. And she actually talked quite a bit about how busy they are. And she was very, just kind of careful and gracious in terms of requests for their time. So, but she does work with a number of local groups that have broader membership. And we polled, there's one called Rosebud. And we pulled from some of their resources, and we did quite, quite a bit of research and looking at different land acknowledgements that particularly were connected with educational institutions.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say I'm really glad to see that there is something in there about why it's not performative and the steps for what we're doing to make sure there's action involved. So I really appreciate it seeing that in here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? No? All right. Seeing none, continuing on. Staff presentation and public hearing on a local control and accountability plan.
All right. Julia, again?
That's, there we go.
All right. Well, this is another exciting moment for Ross Valley because we are launching our three-year LCAP that begins in 2024 and goes all the way through 2027. And just a thank you to our cabinet, Chris and Eric and Marcy for their support of the LCAP process. Nothing is happening. Oh, you have to turn it on. Tricky. Haha. Okay. So again, the LCAP is our Local Control and Accountability Plan, and it's a critical part of our funding formula. But it's a three-year plan, and it's updated every year. It has goals, and it has actions, and it has metrics that are used to measure the success of those actions in terms of meeting our goals. And the LCAP addresses the needs of all students, but specifically our unduplicated students, which include multilingual learners, foster youth, and low-income students. And the LCAP is also required to address California. And the LCAP is also required to address California's eight priority areas, which includes student academic achievement, school climate, student access to a broad curriculum, and parent engagement. Want to recognize that the LCAP is a team effort and it's a process. These are all organizations, all groups, that provided really essential input into the LCAP. Our Superintendent's Council, which includes classified and certificated staff, site and district admin, parent club leaders, site council reps, and representatives from our Equity Task Force serves as our LCAP advisory group. But then additionally, we have lots of other educational partners that provided feedback, including our White Hill students, our multilingual learner group, the DLAC, our group of teacher leaders, Delight, our task force, and SELPA, which is our Special Education Local Plan Area. And then just a lot of time. We, we as an administrative team of site and district administrators meet on a weekly basis, and we spend a tremendous amount of time talking about this LCAP and really digging into the goals and actions to make sure that they were tangible and something that we could really move forward with and see some success, see more success for our students. And then just a reminder that it's all a process, and it began with reviewing our current LCAP and looking at where we've been successful there and what next steps make the most sense for us. We had a mid-year LCAP review that came to the Board of Trustees in February. And then we started that process, which really took place all year long, receiving input from our educational partners and then drafting the LCAP. And now, of course, we're at the public hearing, which is this evening. And then it will come before the board to be adopted on June twenty sixth. And then that last piece there, recognizing the implementation of the LCAP, is the part that actually really is most important of seeing it to fruition. Alrighty, so we have three goals. And our first goal is, again, focused around academics. And it reads that all students will receive highly engaging, research-based instruction to develop proficiency in grade-level standards and skills. Through high-quality instruction and targeted supports and interventions, we will eliminate slash reduce the predictability of learning outcomes based on race, disability, home language, and socioeconomic status. So that's our broad goal. And in order to meet that goal, we have identified four critical actions. The first action is work around priority standards. And our middle school principals, John Baker and Mary Claire Mullin, have been working diligently all year long with their staff on identifying priority standards. So it's great, they've kind of created a template for us so that we can move that work forward to our elementary sites. And then along with, with that identification of essential skills and, and standards comes assessments so that we know how well our students are achieving in those areas. And then that data that comes from assessments is what you see there in Action Two or Action One Point Two, which we're calling learning teams because it's really about working in grade-level teams or content area teams to look at our data and see how we're doing and determine what instructional strategies and targeted supports and interventions need to be implemented in order to accelerate learning for all students, no matter where they are. And then that third action is a very specific action. We have been working for a couple of years now. We moved towards a new English Language Arts curriculum in our elementary schools. We spent all of our PDs, PD days this year immersing our kindergarten through fifth grade teachers in an understanding of the science of reading and structured literacy. And now we have a, a group of seventeen teachers that are looking at curriculum. And our hope is to pilot curriculum next year and hopefully make a decision and, and adopt a new curriculum by the end of the year. And then finally, really important action around ELD, English Language Development Instruction, and ensuring that we are providing ongoing, we are, our English Language Development Teachers, we have one for each of our elementary schools and one at our middle school. And they all received extensive training this year. They had five days of training. But a next really important step is to make sure that our classroom teachers are receiving training so that they have the strategies that they need to support the students in the room, because it's where kids spend most of their time. And so that is the other part of Goal One. And then those are just some of the metrics down there that we will be using. And, and in the actual LCAP, it gives far more detail about each of those. And like for ELA CASP, what is our baseline? What are we hoping to achieve within the next three years? What's our target? That, that higher level of information is in there.
So Julia, what's our staffing capacity reliance in order to really fully execute this vision?
I think that this can be executed with the staff that we currently have.
We don't have to amp up anywhere in particular to maybe?
No, I mean, I mean, the learning teams are our staff. It's our, so for example, it's all second grade teachers getting together. And, and you know, we've done all this work this year around identifying assessments. And next year, we're going to move from piloting I Ready to rolling out I Ready. And then we also have an M class, which is the reading screener. So we're now, now we have normed standardized data.
Infrastructure's there, okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, so we're really, we are ready to launch in that area. Yeah. Any other questions? All right, Goal Two is our wellness goal. So Goal Two is to design and align current social, emotional, and behavioral programs and interventions within our MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Supports, to support the social and emotional well-being and academic success of all students. And just want to point out there that we have been talking for many years in Ross Valley about that very close relationship between social and emotional well-being and academic success. And so, of course, with our wellness goal, we recognize that connection as well. But we have three critical actions there. The first is really looking for a social, emotional learning program for TK through eighth grade students. And this could end up being a, a single standalone program, or it could be a combination of programs, but wanting to ensure that the language that we're using and the skills that we're, kind of that toolbox that we're giving our kids is the same across the district. And then emphasizing as well that any social, emotional learning program should include, should have a strong anti-bias lens. There should be an understanding of students with disabilities and having, promoting disability awareness. And then also the conversation around navigating social media and digital citizenship, which is also a big part of well-being. And then the second action is around absenteeism, which we've had lots of conversations about. But our, our plan is to develop an MTSS, a multi-tiered system of supports for reducing chronic absenteeism and identifying what those early and proactive interventions are that we can implement when students are first showing signs of absenteeism. And then that third action there is really taking a look at the surveys that we're using currently. We're using Panorama Education to get feedback from our students and our families. And we might be making some changes around that, but making sure that we're getting really good data and then that we're using that data to ensure that we are enhancing student connectedness and sense of belonging across our campus and within each classroom. Any questions on Goal Two? All right. And then our third goal is our community engagement goal. And it is to engage in a continuous cycle of input and feedback from our Parents Guardians, students, and staff on the climate and learning experience of all students and their families to support student learning and wellness. And four actions there. The first is another attendance action, but looking at strategies to help remove barriers to attendance and finding different ways to connect with students and families about why attendance may be higher than it was some years ago. And then just really wanting in that, in that second action there to acknowledge the importance of our equity work, both at the district level and the site level. At the district level, we have our Parent Guardian Equity Task Force that's been really a critical, critical component of our work and continues to support our racial equity action plan. But our individual sites as well have developed robust DEI groups of parents and activities and working really together at each site to make sure that their site is inclusive and welcoming for all of our families. And then the last two actions are associated with our multilingual learners. One is really just focusing on our ELAC and DLAC meetings. ELAC being English Language Advisory Committee and DLAC being the district version of that. And so finding ways to increase attendance and increase the frequency of those meetings. And we had some really great evenings this year where we provided a lot of technology support. Sean Maher, our Director of Technology, was a part of that work of making sure all of our parents could access Parent Square and could log onto Aries and, and that kind of thing. And we want to be even more thoughtful about ruling that out and making sure parents are in the loop, all parents are in the loop, regardless of what their home language is. And then a little bit more there in that final action with communicating with our families of multilingual learners and just wanting to kind of streamline our systems for translation and interpretation and making sure that we can quickly and easily communicate with our families. Any questions on Goal Three? All right. And just to point out again that we have been laying the groundwork for all of these goals and actions, including the pilot of our diagnostic assessment, as I said previously, training our teachers in science of reading, the middle school work on priority standards. We have our ELA Instructional Materials Pilot Committee. We've been implementing our district Multi-Tierred System of Support playbook. We've been holding monthly MTSS meetings with all of our English Language Development and Intervention teachers, as well as our coaches. We are, we've implemented a new English Language Development curriculum for our multilingual learners. And we also have these very robust weekly care team meetings at each of our sites that include members of each site team. So the principal, special education staff, the interventionist, sometimes teachers, the speech-language pathologist, all getting together, sitting down, looking at data, looking at individual students, and saying, what, what are our next steps? And putting a plan together, engaging with the family of those students, and, and making sure that we are checking in and seeing progress. And then we are in the midst of developing a district attendance plan. And then just a final slide here, a quote from Margaret Wheatley, who says, "One of the biggest illusions in organizations is that the work stops when our actions are taken, decisions are made, or budgets are approved." And so the development of an LCAP is a multi-layered process. And it feels amazing to have gone through that process and to have this really wonderful plan. But it really doesn't do us much good unless we really put our focus on implementing that plan and make it a living document that is kind of a, a part of like our breathing organism, organization. Right. That is our LCAP plan for the next three years. It's interesting, when I started working on this LCAP, thinking about the last LCAP that we were working on, of course, started in twenty twenty. And we all know what life was like in twenty twenty. So, three years later, we're in a very different place, thankfully, and really ready to do some really important work.
I mean, I, this is excellent. Like, how, how, how do we get more people to pay attention to all the things that? This is just the challenge in general. I get it, okay. I mean, that slide ten is like, this is what we're doing. It's amazing, right? That's like, that's nicely done. And I wonder if there's a way of us coming back to these every so often, like, hey, here's the two things we're doing with LCAP. Just simple, like, quick, here's some, some of the outcomes. Because people in the community don't always know what's going on.
Yeah.
And I wonder if we can just make it in like little digestible chunks?
I think, I think that would be terrific. Be some windows into. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of really amazing.
It is, yeah.
Yeah. And everybody has their hands on this LCAP. That's, that's what I like the most about it, is that it really feels like it belongs to everyone. And that gives me just hope and optimism that we can really make something happen, something wonderful happen for our students.
Anyway, how do we measure the impact from this?
So, each of those actions and goals have lots of metrics that go along with them.
Great. I know you mentioned the metrics underneath, so those will provide, yeah. Those will provide like a really accountable, great.
And like, so for example, for the CASP data, we broke it down by student group and showed, here's where our baseline is, and here's where we want to be. Here's how far we think we can grow for each one of these student groups over the next three years. What do we, and we had long conversations within our administrative meeting about that so that, you know, it's not the district office making those goals, but rather it, it belongs to all of us.
Great.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Julia, I just want to say thank you. I've been, I've been in, I'm in some of these other committees, so I have seen like questions about the LCAP coming in, like, hey, we're talking about this. It's like, all right, that's the part where everybody gets to do input. So I, I know that this is a lot of stuff to pull together into one single document, so I appreciate all that, but thank you. I don't know if we have any other comments from the board? Ryan, Danielle? I'm going to go out to public comment. Anybody in the public? I got a thumbs up from someone in the public, but that's it, okay. So no public comment. And this was just a discussion and information.
Public hearing.
What? Oh, and then, yeah, and then we have to go to the public hearing, which is the next item. So the next item here is. Oh, on the item here, so that's this part. There's just two of these. Okay, although those are the budget, okay. Sorry, all right. And now I guess it is time for our public hearing on this. So, Dr. Muller, the meeting, the date of the meeting is May twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. This public hearing topic is the Local Control and Accountability Plan. Board President, sorry. So, per Education Code EC Sections four two one seven and five two oh six two, two separate governing board public meetings, held at least one day apart, are now required for the school district budget hearing and budget adoption. In addition, the LCAP public hearing must occur at the same meeting as the budget public hearing and the LCAP adoption must occur at the same meeting at the budget adoption. The LCAP item must precede the budget item at each meeting. The public hearings require seventy-two hours public notice, and both the twenty twenty four, twenty five budget and the twenty twenty four, twenty five LCAP must be adopted on or before July first, twenty twenty four. And I now call the public hearing open. Would anybody like to speak at our public hearing? All right, so no one, I now call the public hearing closed. And I'm going to move the item for discussion action. There's no action, so we're just going to move on. All right, so the next item here is staff presentation and public hearing on the preliminary twenty twenty four, twenty five district budget, reserves, and multi-year projections for twenty twenty five, twenty six, and twenty six, twenty seven.
She's just going to present from back here only because it's hard when I'm sitting in front of the screen for too多人 to see. Thank you for the opportunity to, to speak about our, our budget this evening. I don't have any slides in particular about the, for me revise, but I do want to say that the may revise had good, good information, good news and bad news. Good news in that the COLO went. Good news in that the COLA went up just a slight amount for the um twenty four, twenty five uh fiscal year. But the bad news is it, the deficit for the state continued to, to increase, which is bad news for K twelve education as a whole. When looking at the Ross Valley School District, you, one of the things that we're always focusing on is our enrollment, because enrollment drives our attendance. And when looking at our enrollment, what we see here from this particular slide is a downward trend in our, in our enrollment. And it really was um made worse, exacerbated in twenty twenty one when we went um and, and had about a two hundred and sixty student loss uh at that particular point. And when you, when you look at that, that may not sound like a big deal, but in terms of dollars, real dollars, it's a huge loss in our, our statement. Our next slide here, when looking at it, is trying to, to look at the difference between our um P two ADA and our funded ADA. Now, what are those and why is this important? P two attendance is the attendance period that we get funded on in K twelve education. And it's our attendance through the end of March in essence. And that is a, a key uh number for us. Our funded average daily attendance is, in the past, when we were in declining enrollment, we would be funded at or in past years, even before declining enrollment. You would be funded based upon the higher of your average daily attendance in the current fiscal year or previous fiscal year. And so when you're declining enrollment, your previous year attendance is generally going to be higher. So you might have a slight lag in the funded ADA. Well, what happened with COVID is the drops were so large, not just in Ross Valley, but throughout the state. But the state recognized that there was an issue and that that one-year lag period was not gonna be sufficient to, to help districts. And so what they did is they added an additional um thing in there, which was you're now funded at the, the higher of your current year attendance. The prior year attendance or your prior three years of average daily attendance. And so what that did, because our um, our enrollment numbers were so high and also our attendance, it created the situation where our funded average daily attendance was substantially higher than our P two attendance. And so you get this difference between the two. And as we move forward, it's starting to close. This is what's really, you'll hear districts talk about this being a fiscal cliff. This is what drives that fiscal cliff.
Can I ask you a question going back to that first slide of enrollment? And are, 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 do we have a capacity to have two thousand two hundred and thirty-three students? So we, so more, if kids wanted to come to our school district, we have the room at all schools.
Um, well, it wouldn't be at all schools, but yes.
Across all the schools. So, so five hundred and eleven kids could potentially without having to rejigger our infrastructure and.
We have to hire teachers, we have to hire, we have to support those kids, but that's.
We don't have to rent portals.
Twenty-four kids.
We have the facilities to support.
Okay.
And, and then the other thing about that, that is often lost in, on people when you're, when you're declining enrollment, you're also dropping your certificated staff slightly. You do generally through attrition if you can. But the loss in revenues exceeds the loss of expenses. So, for example, if we were to lose a hundred kids, that might be four teachers worth of for the district. And let's just assume salary and benefits that, let's just say it's a hundred thousand for easy calculation. So you're decreasing your expenses, four hundred thousand dollars. Just as a, a, a flat round number, but received.
Kids, you're still net two thousand dollars net loss.
Yeah, you, you're gonna lose six hundred thousand dollars total net. So that, that's really what kills districts when they're in declining enrollment, is that loss overall. So that, that is what becomes the issue. The other thing that is important to note is just what our total revenues are. When looking at what, what are our major sources of revenues that can pay for um people? Our major sources of revenues are your local control funding formula revenues, um, which are driven off of the attendance and also your parcel tax revenues. I do wanna show or state the caveat that the LCFF revenues, if you go into community funded status, it becomes your, your property taxes, but um, if you're state aid funded, which we are in twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-two, twenty-three, um, it's based upon your average daily attendance. So when looking at it, the district is shown, I wanna key in on, on the, the chart at the bottom and really look at that third, um, third row that says total. That's, you're combining LCFF revenues and parcel tax revenues. And when looking at it, what you end up with is only about a little over half a million, close to six hundred thousand dollar increase between twenty-two, twenty-three. It's less than a hundred thousand dollar increase between twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five. And then we see a sharp decline uh in our revenues in twenty-five, twenty-six. And, and then we see a large increase in twenty-six, twenty-seven. One of the things that has happened is in twenty-four, twenty-five, we actually flipped into community funded status because the COLA is only one point oh seven percent. And our, our projected uh property taxes are over four percent increase. And so when looking at those, we end up flipping into community funded status. Because of the, the factors that, that you then have to pull out of your calculation and your, your revenues in twenty-five, twenty-six, which are your um supplemental taxes, as well as we would have to pay in the property taxes uh the charter for Ross Valley Charter. Those would cause us to flip back into state aid in twenty-five, twenty-six. And in twenty-six, twenty-seven, I'm projecting that we are going to be community funded status again. Um, there is a, a bit of a disagreement between myself and the County Office of Education. They agree that I should be removing the E R A funds, but they haven't done it in their calculations. And by not removing the E R A calc, the E R A dollars, which are triple flip dollars that go back to counties, the county and the, the uh town and other government entities within the, the county. By not pulling those out, that forces us in their calculations to remain in state aid funded. They agree that they should be doing it, but they haven't. And they're going to the, to FICMAT, which is a Fiscal Crisis Management Assistance Team, which is the state, to ask should they be pulling it out or not. Which is, it, it shows the, the level of complexity of our revenues. It's not as easy as I make it sound. They're quite complex and there's lots of factors that go into those revenues that are just really getting into weeds.
Can, can I ask two questions? So the, the twenty-six, twenty-seven year, if we look at the previous slide, it has enrollment, we'll be down to sixteen hundred and sixty-six students, which is down from seventy-three in this school year. So over the next three years, we're gonna lose another seventy-three students. But yet our revenues are much higher there. Why, what am I?
Property taxes, because we flip back into community funded status. And so it's, the calculation for the average daily attendance is significantly lower than what it is for the property taxes.
I, I, that's, I get it. Okay.
And that's what's actually driving it, which, as you can see, just looking at that top line, you see how we go from nineteen million to nineteen point four million to nineteen point four, so it's level right there. Then it drops down to eighteen point nine. Then it goes up to almost twenty-one. You see this bouncing of and that's because we are gonna be going in and out of community funded status.
And my second question is, how do we do this enrollment trend data? How do we? I, I understand how we know today. What we're looking for in twenty-four, twenty-five school district is seventeen hundred and twenty-two students. How do we project that out into, to twenty-six, twenty-seven, which again is, using your simple math, we're losing around seven hundred thousand dollars in that year from where we are today in per pupil funding.
Uh, we utilize what's called the sur- um, survival cohort.
Cohort survival.
A cohort survival, reverse it method. And in essence, what you're doing is moving kids from one year to the next.
Correct, yeah.
You do a calculation to see what your new kids that are coming in would look like. And keep in mind that we're also fully implemented at TK at that point as well, so that in twenty-six, twenty-seven. So that's part of what's helping, we're no longer getting additional children by that point. So that, that's part of what drives it. And what you're seeing is really larger, larger class sizes that are leaving in the upper grades and smaller class sizes that are coming.
Oh, that makes sense from the sixteen, seventeen of the middle school level. That makes sense.
And so as, as, what is happening is as your class sizes continually decrease as they go into the lower grades, as they move down, you're getting rid.
It's kinda like a three-year average. Yeah, okay.
So that's part of what's driving it. In terms of our assumptions, these are the cost of living adjustments, the parcel taxes. Um, we're utilizing a two percent parcel tax increase. The problem with our parcel tax, we do have a three percent um driver on it, but we have the ability for people to opt out of it. And so we utilize a lower rate for that drop, people that pull out. Uh, but we would always go back and, and look at that and adjust as necessary. Our funded average daily attendance is be there. And, and I just wanted to know what the C P I index, the Consumer Price Index, because that helps drive what um people are paying, um, even at the pump. And you see what our um, our pension costs are for the two, two units. We have the certificated staff, all certificated staff fall under CalSTRS, which you see STIRS there. And all of the classified um people fall under PURS. The difference between the two is Ca- uh, CalSTRS is set in statute, which means that they actually have to change law in order to increase that percentage. CalPURS does an actuarial study every year and it adjusts every year. So that's why you see that changing.
Chris, just help me understand again, but where did the C P I assumptions come from?
Uh, we've utilized those or received those directly from uh School Services of California. If you look at it, we've provided a copy of the um, the, what they call the dart board.
Yep.
And the dart board includes this information. And what they do is they go and they, they have a panelists that look at what this, what drives it and give you estimates moving forward.
Hope they're right.
Yeah, and they can change. And they do change. If I get the, every budget cycle, so for the as, as we go into the, the year end, we'll get another dart board that may change at that point. So in July, I'm like, it revised.
Thanks.
In terms of our uh general fund revenues, this slide I like to show just because it is graphically shows what our revenues are. We have a huge amount in LCFF revenues, uh and a very large amount under parcel tax. And then everything else is just a small percentage. And this is our total general fund. And so in essence, the two single largest sources of, of revenues are those two things we were talking about earlier, parcel tax and LCFF. And the parcel taxes due to generosity of our, of our community approved by, approved by the taxpayers. And next year, we um, we would be putting four point seven million dollars towards certificated salaries with teacher salaries and benefits. That's what we charged. Within our um multi-year projections, you can see our revenues, all of our revenues reflected here. In terms of our expenses, our single largest source of expenses are salaries and benefits. And that's exactly what you would expect to see. We're in the people business and so you would expect us to, to be putting our dollars towards, towards that area first and foremost. And that's what we see reflected here. Um, and then you see services now that are operating. Um, we also have a lot of services that have to be provided outside of the staff. And that's kind of what goes in there. And we also have utilities and things of that nature into that. So again, single largest source of expenses, salaries and benefits. This is what your multi-year projections look like. Can you see that our expenses um do go down next year? A lot of that has to do with categoricals, um, your restricted programs uh dropping. And then you see the expenses going up throughout the multi-year projections. This is an important slide, um, because this is telling everybody what our um multi-year projections look like in terms of our ending fund balances. Now, the district the size of Ross Valley has to maintain a three percent reserve under California law. The district also has a policy that shows that we would remain, uh, that we would maintain an additional seven percent, so a total of ten percent. Uh, we are looking in terms of our multi-year projections at this particular point in twenty-three, twenty-four at just under twenty percent. And then you see that we start to uh drop and go down to three point one fourth percent in twenty-six, twenty-seven. One of the things that I have done, and you'll see an additional row just above the uh three zero percentage, I have assigned an amount for our uh community funding. What that is, that is the excess that we would be receiving above the, the state aid in terms of revenues. The reason for that is at this particular point, these are just estimates of our revenues. And I know that there are districts that flip in and out of community funded status. I, I know of a district that was um showing that for the current year, they were gonna be in community funded status until last week. Last week, their, their, their uh LCFF calculator showed them flipping back into state aid funding for the current year. And here we are at the end of May. And so it, it is a way to maintain um and ensure that you don't overspend those reserves. Uh, and those dollars that you don't spend dollars that you're actually not going to receive. So you see it assigned the same amount for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, which is because it's the same dollar. And then you see it increased to one point five million. And that's because we flip back into community funded status in twenty-six, twenty-seven, that's what you see it increase. And so that's what's showing, making those recent percentages show where they're at as well. And with that, it's kind of a bleak picture when you look at revenues. I, I don't wanna sugarcoat that. When revenues are flat or dropping over the next several years, and then the third year, it does go up. It makes it difficult. It makes it very difficult. And one of the things that School Services of California will say, the most difficult position a district can be in is actually what they consider to be a teeter, teetering district. We're in a, we're in a position where we're teetering in and out of community and state aid funded status. And the reason that it's the most difficult position, everybody has those pressures to increase salaries and benefits. And it's very difficult to know what your, what your revenues are until you actually have them, because you have these wild swings in your revenues. And it just becomes really a difficult position that the district is, is placed. So, and that, in a nutshell, this is our.
You know, if I could say that, this is my sixth one of these to look at. And total expenses seems to be pretty stable across the board. We know what our expenses are. And it's funny that we have a room of three people in the public here. Uh, David, we really start to explain um the moving target that is a budget. And, and yet um, a couple of meetings previous, we have people just asking for, you know, more salaries without understanding the consequences of what that does to the business of, of, of our, our work here. And I point to the fact that when we, the first four years I was on this board is we always had over a ten percent reserve. And so when Chris is talking about the teetering effect and the uncertainty of not knowing where your revenue is coming from, imagine having um, a bunch of employees and you don't, you're, you're not a hundred percent sure where the revenue is gonna come to pay them. And they're still demanding to have more um, to make them feel whole and, and what they need. It's just a, it's a, it's an exercise in understanding. And, and people really um need to look at, you know, when we get into this projected twenty-six, twenty-seven. And I understand this is a, a constant moving target. I mean, I, I remember these meetings, we were, we here and then, you know, two weeks ago, we find this windfall or we find this or, you know. And, and so it's, it's a really difficult process, but understanding that in twenty-six, twenty- And, and so it's, it's a really difficult process, but understanding that in twenty six, twenty seven, we'd be looking at possibly, according to today's calculations, a three point one four unrestricted percentage of our reserve. And that, that's the bare minimum. If we go below three percent, we lose all the ability to make our own decisions. And correct me if I'm right, the state would come in and make our financial cuts and decisions for us for the most part, if we go underneath.
They can't.
They can't.
They won't do it initially, but they can.
Yeah. And, and so that, so you know, it's, it's the concept of, you know, are we saving for a rainy day? Or are we spending for the rainy day for the demand of what's, what's asked for today? And, and all I'm trying to say in my, my notes here is that thi- this gets down to the very lowest part that I've ever seen us in my six years here. And that's a very uncomfortable place to be. And that's why the board added an additional seven percent reserve so that we wouldn't ever get to the point where our rainy day was like, would run out in a couple of months. And, and that's what we have to know that we're flirting with by trying to make everybody happy. And I just wanted, it's a great report. I appreciate the numbers. I wish people would dig into this early. Be an ounce of prevention instead of trying.
And I believe it was San Francisco Unified that recently had state, stay and rescind put in by, by the state because of their financial position. So that's what can happen. They, they put somebody in. They have complete control over all of our, all of our purchases and all of our payments. And that's what the state is in, they're standing for send this. And the other thing, kind of going back to your, your point, the only thing that's, School Services will say is certain is that this budget will be exactly wrong tomorrow. And so it, it's a projection with the best information we have right now. And just that it's a projection. So.
Chris, how, how are other groups in Ross Valley dealing with this? Police, fire, libraries, other public good? If we're having less people move here and costs are going up with pensions and costs are going up in general, how are, how are other groups looking at this type of bleak?
And we were talking about that with, with somebody today. Some of the other local entities have actually gone out and looked at some form of tax. They've, they've recently put ballot measures on. I believe there was the fire department recently going on. In ambulance services, et cetera. So that, that's what has happened, basically increasing the revenues through taxation. Which does dovetail into part of what we're looking at moving forward is a potential parcel tax.
Do you have any other clarifying questions from the board?
Thanks, Chris. Great job.
Yes, thank you. Along with the LCAP, this is another one of those really, really time intensive things. It comes out to a small document, but I know it's like hours and hours of time. So thank you. Yes, we need a public comment. Okay, so with that, I will move on to our public hearing. So the date of our meeting is May twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. So this public hearing topic is preliminary twenty twenty four, twenty five district budget and multi-year projections for twenty twenty five, twenty six and twenty twenty six, twenty seven. Per Education Code EC, sections four two ones, two seven and five two oh six two, two separate governing board public meetings held at least one day apart are now required for the school district budget hearing and budget adoption. In addition, the LCAP public hearing must occur at the same meeting as the budget public hearing and the LCAP adoption must occur at the same meeting as the budget adoption. The LCAP item must precede the budget item at each meeting. The public hearings require seventy two hours of public notice and both the twenty twenty four, twenty five budget and the twenty twenty four, twenty five LCAP must be adopted on or before July first, twenty twenty four. I now call the public hearing closed. Would anybody like to say anything? No, please come up. And state your name and affiliation if you don't mind. It has some good news.
Thank you.
Sure.
PJ Pepper. I'm a parent with a kindergartner and manager. I appreciate all of the budget. I just want to clarify, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, just as an individual parent in the district. Appreciate all the budget information and understand, you know, how some of these assumptions get brought in, like the use of the cohort survival method for projecting enrollment. I think this board, understanding the concern around teacher salaries in particular, but with expenditures generally, should look when approving these budgets at where some of the standard assumptions and increase factors, which we're using in, you know, without controversy, differ from the district's actual experiences. So, you know, we've seen for the past two years at least, even for the actuals this year, the cohort survival method underestimating our enrollment and enrollment increasing. Bring it up because obviously that affects future revenue, which in negotiations affects how much money appears to be available for negotiated salary increases, things like that. You know, one thing that jumped out to me early on in the budget was, at least based on what we have here, it includes the historic average ratio unrestricted salaries and benefits to total expenditures. And our three-year trailing average was eighty two point four. And the budget year, this first subsequent year and the second subsequent year actually show that ratio decreasing. So we are spending less of our budget on salaries going forward. You know, I just think that that doesn't necessarily reflect, but I know this board is trying to have happen. And I also know that that, the ratio we have is under the state average, which understandably includes a bunch of other districts. The other main point where I think assessing our district's financial results versus the county and pro forma process is, you know, in our use of calculated CPI related increases to expenditures where we know this district just had two big years of efforts related to the Children's Center where a lot of money was spent that would not otherwise have been spent. And to the extent that that cost is factored into the expenditures going forward with just the two point five percent increase, that money's not actually going to be spent again in subsequent years. But we're not necessarily going forward in line iteming projected recurring versus non-recurring expenses. Again, just understand that this budget isn't just a look to see how we can spend our money, but it's just, you know, it's, it's answering state questions. But I think it's all relevant as you consider what we're using. Yeah, I think that's.
We have no further comments from the public. I will now call our public hearing closed. Thank you. All right, so I don't have to do anything. This is intermissionally. Okay. So moving on with our agenda, we have the recommended adoption of resolution fourteen, twenty three, twenty four, tax anticipation notes for twenty twenty four, twenty five.
So this is me. This is something that is done every year. And so that's one of those preponderant type of transactions. And what this does is it allows the district, should we have a cash flow issue, to be able to borrow directly from the county of Marin. The county of Marin is one of the few, if not the only counties in the state that allow this type of transaction to happen. They allow us to go negative. And then what ends up happening is they just charge us negative interest to be able to pay everybody else that's in the general pool. So this transaction just allows us to be able to do that. As you get deeper and deeper into community funded status, in, in fact, it will impact us even more next year because we'll have a larger dollar amount that comes into form. Your property taxes, you only get your property taxes basically in two large tranches. You get that in December and then April. So you're not getting dollars throughout the year. And so it is, you'll always have the potential to go negative in cash as you get really close to that. And this just allows districts to be able to, to do that and just be charged negative.
Do we have any clarifying comments or questions from the board?
This is something we've, we've ever.
We've used routine. We've, I've not used it since I've been here, but it's, it's like a backup to have in case you need it.
But when was the last time we approved?
Every year.
Is it every year?
It's approved every year, but I haven't.
We've never taken, we've never tapped into it. That's, it's like, I do recall being, when I was new, doing this, but we won't.
Really.
We're not anticipating that we're going to use this. Okay.
Our revenues will start to change as we go into the general fund. We'll get those larger dollar amounts.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, we have to go to public comment first. Do we have any public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion on the second?
I'll second it.
All right, motion is second. Ryan.
Aye.
Daniel.
Aye.
Chris.
Hi.
Rachel, aye. All right, moving on, I have the recommended adoption of resolution thirteen, twenty three, twenty four, transfer of funds.
This is me again. This is something that is done every year as well. This allows me to be able to transfer between funds within the district. It's not unusual for this to happen. A perfect example of this is our Child Nutrition Services Fund and General Fund. We're transferring dollars back and forth between them throughout the year. And this, we're not able to do those transfers absent having this type of resolution. But I guess this is just one of those that happens every year.
Any clarifying questions? Okay. Seeing none, I will go out for public comment. And seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of resolution thirteen, twenty three, twenty four, transfer of funds.
All right, I have a motion to have second.
I'll second it.
All right, Ryan.
Aye.
Daniel.
Aye.
Chris.
Hi.
Rachel, aye. Thank you, Chris. And moving on, recommended adoption of resolution fifteen, twenty two, twenty three and sixteen, twenty two, twenty three, authorization to sign on behalf of the governing board.
This is again.
You're asking for a lot today, Chris.
It happens every year as well. This is also required. We have to do this every year. And we will be coming back now that Tyler Raff has been approved. We'll also bring back one probably in June and add him to the resolution so that he can sign as well. In the past, Marcy has been on there in addition. What this allows us to do is, is sign purchase orders and things of that nature and contracts on behalf of the district. And so there are only two individuals moving forward, absent the superintendent, that would have that authorization from everyone.
Do we have any questions? Wait, so you guys are going to be on the hook for signing everything for the rest?
Only until we get Tyler. Right now, it's Marcy.
June thirty. And after June thirty, it'll still be free. All right. All right, so you guys are not going to be terribly, oh, put out. Okay. We have many questions from the boarder. All right, public comment? Seeing none? All right, I will entertain a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion for the board to adopt resolutions fifteen dash twenty two dash twenty three and sixteen dash twenty two dash twenty three, authorization to sign on behalf of the governing board.
Can I create? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Great. Chris.
Hi.
Daniel.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Rachel, aye. And that is adopted. Next item is recommended approval and adoption of RVSD's response to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report, "A Free Public Education Includes School Supplies."
All righty, and on April nineteenth, the Marin County Civil Grand Jury released that said report. And so every school district, as well as the Marin County Office of Education, is asked to provide a response to it later than July nineteenth, two thousand twenty four. And so I've listed here the findings as well as the recommendations that the civil grand jury has made. Attached is Ross Valley School District's response to the civil grand jury. And so we will be well within meeting the July nineteenth deadline. If the response is approved and adopted this evening.
That was an interesting thing to receive as a new board president. I'm like, why am I getting an email from the grand jury? And then they're like, and don't talk about it. It's like, oh my gosh. Anybody have any questions? Clarifying information now. Public comment? Seeing none? All right, I will entertain a motion.
I recommend we approve and adopt the response to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report, "Free Public Education Includes School Supplies."
I will second. Rachel is second. Daniel.
Aye.
Chris.
Hi.
Ryan.
Aye.
Rachel, aye. Thank you. I don't want to have to answer the grand jury again. Next item is approve art, music and instructional materials block grant.
That one's mine. And so this is, these funds come from Assembly Bill one eighty one and it provides one-time funding for various educational expenditures, including professional development, instructional materials and operating costs. And so our district's funding allocation is one million forty four thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, sizable. And these funds are available for encumbrance through the twenty twenty five, twenty six fiscal year. And so the, the plan that is attached to the board docs shows the use for Ross Valley. It's mostly around instructional materials adoptions, professional development and also funding our coach for, for the next two years. For these grant funds, our coach, instructional coach. But again, these are one-time restricted dollars. And so staff recommends that the board approve the plan for the art, music and instructional materials discretionary block grant.
Questions?
I have a question about the healthcare cost. What is, what is that?
Took me a while to understand all the allowable uses. And Chris, I don't know if you would be better answering this one, but you can include healthcare costs. But again, these are limited dollars for a limited period of time so that isn't something that we thought.
That's evergreen.
So by, 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 we, as you know, we have the ELA adoption coming up. Our middle school is looking at mathematics curriculum right now. We're looking at an SEL curriculum. All of those kinds of purchases can be largely funded through this, which means that we don't need to use unrestricted funds and instead can use these restricted funds. And so it frees up funds.
Okay. And the COVID, and the other question I had was the COVID nineteen protocols, are those really still?
That's not something that, well, the, this block grant actually came out, I think, a year and a half ago. But districts typically held on using the funds because it wasn't clear that we would be able to keep them. It seemed at one point that the governor was going to maybe sweep them, so we waited. So maybe a year and a half ago, it, there would have been more districts that would have chosen to use the funds for that. But that certainly isn't something that I think we would consider at this point.
Those are just my questions that came along about this.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, last year when the state was, you're going to fiscal issues that they had at this time, exactly, they swept about a third of those dollars from districts statewide. The problem is a lot of districts that already spent those dollars because they gave it to us in cash already. And so districts were scrambling. So there was still the thought that they might sweep the entire amount, especially right now with this fiscal crisis that the state is having. People wonder if that was part of what they were going to continue to look at and target. They were looking to cut at the state level.
Okay, okay.
So then, Chris, how quickly then do you take this million dollars out of the budget that we just talked about and put that elsewhere?
I think it goes into the restrictions.
Okay. And then you can.
It does free up parts of the general fund for things, as Julie was saying, right?
Well, if, if we didn't have these dollars, we would be spending them in the general fund unrestricted. And so because tax books were one of those things years and years and years ago, back in twenty twenty ten, we had what was called instructional material. And they all got in this year. It was year one or two. And they all got in this year, it was year one or two into. Your general revenue limit and then ultimately to your LCFS, so it's now unrestricted. So districts no longer had a funding source for those textbooks. You had to actually utilize general fund unrestricted dollars. This will free those dollars out for us. To be able to buy textbooks that are directly to students.
And so it'll look like a savings of a million bucks over the next two years, three years. These are just one-time dollars. So we have to put this money back into.
It's not that you put dollars in. You don't set dollars aside for instructional materials unless you know you're going to be purchasing.
Yeah, got it.
Because it's not something that happens each and every year. And so some districts, what they'll do is they'll set aside a small amount of their reserve for it. So that you can build it up. Uh we haven't done that here. The the problem with it is when you do have a large textbook order, it is just that it's large. And so it can be several hundred thousand dollars.
Well, it's a good thing.
It's a great thing.
I should add, actually, that we're also gonna be expending some of the funds in technology. That's actually a major expense. That's a part of it. So the iPads that are needed for um uh rolling out iReady. And then additionally looking at replacing projectors. Because our classroom projectors are going to time out at some point here and those are very expensive. So really, we've been spending our time thinking about what are, what are the things that we can spend one-time dollars on? Um that will have to be spent otherwise.
Well, I'm going to wait for you to.
Oh, I just said, do we have any public comments? Nope, okay, so if not, I will entertain a motion.
Okay, and I will actually um propose a motion to approve the plan for the expenditures of funds from the art, music, instructional materials block grant.
Please, do I second?
I'll second it.
Alright, Chris.
Hi.
Daniel.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Rachel, aye. And moving on, recommended adoption of resolution oh nine twenty-three twenty-four, proposing an election. Requesting the Board of Supervisors to consolidate with any other election conducted on November fifth, two thousand twenty-four. And requesting election services by the Marin County Elections Department.
Thank you. And so this is brought back um for you tonight because we have the correct day listed all throughout the document of the election. On November five, two thousand twenty-four.
This says approximately a hundred and forty-five minutes. It's only five minutes, right? Five minutes here and a hundred and forty-five minutes, okay, alright, just making sure.
Alright, so um. Any questions about? Sorry to.
How is this getting a hundred and forty minutes?
So um with this, um we'd be looking for you to adopt the resolution that would allow us to um. Request that the Board of Supervisors in Marin County consolidate our Board of Trustee election, which we have three open seats uh coming up. Um at in time for the November fifth, two thousand twenty-four election, with the other elections conducted on that date. And then requesting election services by the Marin County Elections Department.
Public comment?
Any public comment? No. Alright, no other discussion needed?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Great, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ooh, you're too it. Uh Ryan.
Aye.
Daniel.
Aye.
Chris.
Hi.
Rachel, aye. And uh the next item is status update on the Deer Park property sale.
Alright, so here, escrow um did close yesterday and um it was set originally to close on May twenty-seventh. But um because of the Monday holiday for Memorial Day, um in accordance with law, it was fully funded the fall, or sorry, it was um. It closed the following day. The escrow has been fully funded and um. We had already received the wire transfer. We'd already received um information from the town of Fairfax that the sale's consistent with the general plan. And we'd already received notification from the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Um indicating that the HCD agrees that the property is exempt from the Surplus Property Act. And so now we, everything is signed and.
On record.
It's on record, it's here we are.
Well, congratulations to the Fairfax Children's Center.
And the Ethel Sider Siderman Legacy Fund as well.
I'm happy for the family.
Very happy.
So that was just a brief update. Do you need any public comments?
Yes.
Public comment? We have three minutes.
I know before the funds are spent, they're supposed to be a plan presented to the board. So just wanted to know now that the funds are in, if there's an estimate that's gonna be presented, if it's gonna be during this calendar year or next. Um I didn't see the funds included in the projections. I assume they're gonna be um restricted funds. And so just wanted to. Suggest and say that I think it would be good if they're spent on uh already. Uh contemplated restricted fund uh expenses that it's qualified for to invest in. Reducing ongoing expenses, so uh you know, uh maintenance and sort of things that can help. Energy efficiency, things like that for buildings. Um just as a, as something to consider for the district going forward.
Thank you.
That was just information, so we move on. Um consent actions. Unless anybody would like to discuss any of these items specifically or individually, we can just, I'll entertain a motion for all of them. Oh, public comment. And did, did you have any public comment on the consent actions? No? Alright, so your public comment, thank you. Alright, well, I will entertain a motion.
Remove consent.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, Ryan.
Aye.
Chris.
Hi.
Daniel.
Aye.
Rachel, aye. Alright, consent is moved and board business. So committee updates and reports from and announcements by trustees. Anybody have anything you want to pass up to?
Uh we had the the Golden Bell was this past week. It was exceptional. Great turnout. Uh Dominican, it was fan, it was fantastic. My first time going and it was great. Really cool experience.
Thank you for serving on the Golden Bell.
We are having our inaugural Day of Belonging celebration. This Friday at Bookside. Highly recommend that trustees and others attend. Uh we're going to have an amazing dance group and.
Poison, okay.
Good time, good timing.
Oh, it starts at uh eleven o'clock. It's a dance group, Mexican Aztec dancing group, Mexcultural, will be performing. We're gonna have food. From um different cultures provided to the kids and poetry readings and an art project. So hoping for a great turnout.
See, I attended second budget committee meeting and the wellness committee meeting. I did site visits to White Hill and Hidden Valley. And then I shepherded the music in the parks trip for White Hill Middle School. And I just have to say congratulations to all of the musicians and thank you to their teachers. It's a, it's an interesting um event to go to. It's a lot of fun. Um and special call out to the orchestra. They received a superior rating, so which is the highest you can get. So the orchestra, the advanced seven, eight orchestra did extremely well and I'm really proud of them. Um they sounded amazing. And then uh I also went to the seven, eight grade uh White Hill Middle School Choir Concert Orchestra Band concert. And um having seen them perform at Great America and their music in the parks thing, and then seeing them two weeks later. Even in that two weeks span, they had all the groups had improved still. Um so it was really nice to see that. Yes, that's all. Alright, anything? Okay. And with that, I will move on to um approval of the special meeting minutes for April twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. So do we have any questions on this? If not.
Can we prove the all the minutes?
Um.
All three or do we have to do each one separately?
Ryan was not in the special meeting for the April twentieth. Okay. Might just say also I know that typically on our board, our trustees like to abstain when they haven't attended. But you don't have to, as long as you reviewed the meeting minutes. So um. I would consider maybe not going through who was present at the meeting or not. I know. And um and so just to run through them, I do think you have to take them individually, just because they're agenda separate. Um but just, no, I don't know that you need to run through who all attended.
Okay.
Um and then just take the vote. If it passes, great. If not, then um it may be because somebody's abstaining. Too many people abstaining because they weren't there and Michellei absent, so we have to just look at each one.
Okay. Well, that, I mean, it makes sense because the first board meeting I sat on as a trustee, everybody who'd been at the meeting had left the board. So we wouldn't have had a quorum because there was three of us. Okay, that makes sense. Alright, so um. Vote if you have appropriately um reviewed these and approved. Um so the first one was the special meeting for April twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. Back to what we were discussing, I'll entertain a motion and there's no public here for comment, so.
I recommend we approve the special meeting for April twentieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Great, I will second that. Daniel.
Aye.
Rachel, aye. Chris.
Hi.
Ryan.
Same.
Okay. Approval of regular meeting minutes for May first, two thousand twenty-four.
I recommend we uh approve the regular meeting minutes for May first, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second that. Daniel.
Aye.
Rachel, aye. Ryan.
Aye.
Chris.
I'm staying.
And uh approval of the special meeting minutes for May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Uh I'll make it a turkey. I'll do three for three. I recommend the uh Board of Trustees approve the special meeting for May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second.
Um Daniel.
Aye.
Chris.
Hi.
Ryan.
Aye.
Rachel, aye. Alright, great, thank you. And then the Board of Trustees revised calendar of meetings for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
And with this, we did add a date uh meeting in July, July seventeenth, should a regular meeting be needed. Um there are some topics that can only be covered at regular meetings, so we thought we should add one there just in case. But of course, if there's no need for a board meeting, it can always be canceled.
I like that, that we can cancel that one. So let's keep that.
It is historic in Ross Valley that we hardly ever had a July meeting. It hasn't been until COVID hit that we really needed them, so.
Yeah, I think in recognition that it's probably Tyler's first. Board, potential board meeting as an acting superintendent. He may want to do something, but I'm gonna say let's keep it as a tentative. Can we note t-tentative?
You don't need to.
Okay.
It's just if it's not needed, you cancel it.
Great.
We sent out an email to everybody and we're like, thank you. So, any questions, clarifying questions? No?
No.
No public comments, there's no public here, and I will entertain a motion.
Okay. The board approved the revised twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four trustees' calendar of meetings.
Great, I have a first of a second.
I will second it.
Alright, Chris.
Hi.
Daniel.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Rachel, aye. Alright, moving on to Cabinet and Superintendent Reports.
Right, I'll start off with the person who's been the quietest tonight, Eric Sable, Director of Student Service.
A lot of smiling over here though, a lot of listening and learning. Um. Uh just, we uh had our um first wellness committee meeting a couple of weeks back. And that was really exciting um to gather staff, um including Mr. Carson. Um uh parents and students um from White Hill for. Um young leaders who are also um student wellness ambassadors um in the county. Um so that was really exciting and we um got, I mean, we just got the sleeves rolled up and dove right into policy. We read our district's wellness policy. Um and uh and that was great just to build an understanding about the purpose and scope of uh the committee's work. And um uh moving into the start of uh twenty-four, twenty-five. We'll be setting our dates um for that, that committee. Um and again, really exciting to see our different stakeholder groups and have student leadership um represented. So very grateful for everybody's um participation. Um and one of our board committees. And um and then it's just, you know, uh. Business as usual on the special ed side of thing, literally dozens and dozens of transition meetings going on. And um the teachers, of course, working hard for the um uh end of term progress reports on goals. We're continuing to evaluate kids. Um and then our uh extended school year staff is set. Incredible work. Um amazing uh the work from the HR department and uh the special ed team. And we have a lot of folks from in-house and then we're bringing in a couple of folks on contract to fill out some of our specialist roles. So we're really excited to have those four weeks of additional um learning opportunities for our kiddos at Bookside. Um and with that, I rest.
Thank you. And Julia, anything more from education services?
Yes, just in the realm of HR actually, um and hiring. Um noting that we continue to have positions, open positions that need to be filled. Um we are making progress. We've built a couple of really hard to fill positions in special ed. Um found a fabulous sixth grade teacher, but we do, we do still have open positions and we're working really hard to fill them. Had a meeting um last week, an HR meeting, that was a countywide meeting and lots of conversation. Um within that from representatives from other districts about how tricky it is for them. And then this morning, I just took a look at Ed Join and did a little tally. Um and noted that many districts have openings listed on Ed Join. And unfortunately, there's a lot of overlap with what the positions are. So for example, you know, we have a open music position. And you know, other districts are also looking for that music teacher, which which just makes it more difficult. Um. But we're working really hard at it. And we've started reaching out to universities to talk with them about, you know, potential interns. Um for credential students, but um and we will just keep plugging away. Check it every, I check it morning and night, in the middle of the day and on the weekends. And we jump real quick every time um there's a potential candidate.
And something different um around uh the open positions is. This is kind of the first time that um districts have seen a dearth of applicants in the K five realm. So multiple subject um teachers. Those are usually the positions that you get hundreds of applications. And this is outside of Ross Valley. I talked today with um our attorney who um does human resources work in many, many districts. Um throughout the state, not just Northern California. And she said that that is um just what has been reported from those districts, that the supply of teachers is really, really low. And even districts who are able to pay high, high salaries are not getting the applicants um for their positions either. And so um we will do our best to continue to fill and get as creative as we can. Thank you, Julia, for leading that for our district. Anything else? I don't mean to bring us down. Yeah, on that note.
That's it from me, sorry.
And Chris.
We've had two budget advisory committee meetings since our last board meeting and we also have one on Monday next week. So look forward to that. And um as we move forward into the next couple of weeks. This is really the busy time of the year for the maintenance and operations and custodial staff. In addition to the the teachers out there, just because of the end of the school year. And we look forward to the promotion ceremony. It's one thing that I look forward to at the end of every year.
Thank you. Um and I did attend the YES board meeting. Rachel unfortunately was sick and couldn't make it. Um the focus of that meeting was around the YES Foundation's financial situation, including their annual ask. Comparisons with other districts and potential funding increases. Um they did talk about um raising the annual ask, but ultimately decided that they would not do the increase, that they would focus on participation. And they also considered looking at moving Battle of the Bands to October. One of the um items that we're working on in the round table is to get a coordinated calendar between all of the parent groups. Just generically, I call them parent groups because each site has a parent club or parent PTO, PTA, and so on. And so trying to get a um an organized calendar so that um each of the site parent groups as well as YES can run their campaigns. For um fundraising. Um and uh they also discussed increasing theater program fees. To offset the rising costs. Um, they did talk about um eliminating the busing of video services to reduce costs for the theater program. Um, they are now going to be hosting a um, a mini retreat, if you will, to talk about uh the board's structure, potentially having um, um a, what are they calling it, advisory board? Um, and then their meeting in June will be focusing on the tier celebrations or achievements and discussing future strategies. So that's the update from YES. And uh with the, uh, still doing some trustee visits, so those are great. Um, getting into the classrooms, it's always a highlight of um everything that we do is to see, you know, the um interactions that's going on, the teaching and learning, if you will. Um, so those are great. Um, had a great time at their second event this year with Dr. Lori Watson, and it was awesome. I um, we had agreed that we would have some adult supervision in addition to our White Hill um volunteer students to do the daycare. Um, and because uh, so Sean Lawher and Chris Colson had volunteered to be those adult supervisors, but once I started to hear Lori speak, it's like, wait a minute, Chris and Sean have to get in, they have to hear her. So I took their place outside with the kids. And it was um fabulous. I saw committee members and um get to uh watch the kids and got to meet some of our students in the district who I haven't met before, and their younger siblings who are coming up. So that was awesome. And we have um uh, let's see, the last thing, oh, was the Golden Bell, just to echo what um Daniel said. It was my, you know, there are a lot of lasts for me. This is the second to the last board meeting, at least that I'm participating in as a, as an employee. And it was my last Golden Bell. And I too am looking very much forward to the promotions, the highlight of getting to see those fifth graders and eighth graders um just celebrating their years of um success and it grows in our school district. It's just an amazing time. So with that, Cabinet rests.
Thank you. Alright, so meeting review, future board topics and board directions. If you have any input there. If not, you can always feel free to contact uh myself or Marcy or the future table. You can always talk about putting something on my agenda. Um, meeting debrief. I appreciate how fast some of these things have gone and I appreciate the brevity of some of the presentations, so thank you for that. And if there's nothing further, I will call our meeting to a close and adjourn it at eight fifty-eight.